Councilmember in favor, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, council is grateful to have Minister Regina Robinson Easter of New Birth Christian Ministries here to pray with us. Pastor, welcome.
Thank you. If you bow your heads. Dear gracious God, we thank you for your loving kindness and tender mercies. We thank you for this day and an opportunity to gather. We ask for protection for our youth and families. We ask that you touch hearts and minds to cease the violence. We ask that you touch and mend the heart and broken-hearted. We invite you into this chamber and into this meeting. We ask for your covering and blessings over all individuals represented here today. We ask that you release the spirit of peace and unity, as we know where there is unity, there is strength. We ask all these things, as we know you are able to do exceedingly abundantly above all we can ask or think. And we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Clerk, please call LaRoe.
Bangston Brown Dorance, favor Remy President Harden. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I get a motion dismissed for the reading of the journal? Clerk, please call LaRoe.
Bangston Brown Dorance, favor Remy President Harden.
Are there any additions or corrections to the journal? Hearing none, the journal is approved. This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be written to the record?
None at this time.
Thank you. We'll go around the dais for resolutions and announcements, starting with Councilmember Bangston. Then we will move to Councilmember Brown.
Thanks, Council President. I do have an announcement for this evening. To declare July as National Park and Recreation Month and declare Columbus Recreation and Parks Department for its role in improving the quality of life for residents in the city of Columbus. Parks and recreation are an integral part of our communities throughout the country, including Columbus, Ohio, that connect our communities through the power of nature, wellness, and creativity to improve the physical and mental health of residents and improve the quality of life in our city. Parks and recreation encourage physical activities, providing space for popular sports, hiking, trails, swimming, physical fitness, as well as activity designed to promote an active lifestyle. The department works to reduce violence by offering positive recreational activities for youth and young adults and resources to support families, such as free food, resources, violence prevention, and job readiness programs. The department also plays a vital role in protecting, preserving, and growing our natural environment through the Urban Forestry Master Plan, nature preserves, and environmental education, and volunteerism efforts. We are proud of the continued work of the department and its staff to help increase our community's economic prosperity through tourism, the attraction and retention of local businesses, and crime reduction. Columbus City Council would like to recognize July as Park and Recreation Month, and we honor our Columbus Recreation and Parks Department for its role in making Columbus one of the best places to live and work and to recreate. Director Reese, on behalf of my council colleagues, I'd like to thank you for your leadership and acknowledge the efforts of your outstanding team by building an exemplary recreational parks department. Director Reese, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Council President Harden, Council Mitch Brown, and members of city council. Thank you for making this important celebration of National Park and Recreation Month, July. Since 1985, Park and Recreation Month has been celebrated in July to promote building strong, vibrant, and resilient communities throughout the power of parks and recreation, and to recognize the more than 160,000 full-time park and recreation professionals across the nation. This year's theme, Where Community Grows, celebrates the vital role park and recreation professionals play in bringing people together and fostering growth within this community, our community. The Columbus Recreation and Parks Department has some of the best staff in the industry, and their commitment to serving the community is evident every day. I appreciate you for honoring our staff and the important role recreation and parks play in improving the quality of life for all residents in the city of Columbus. Thank you for your partnership and support this month and throughout the year. Once again, thank you as we celebrate July Recreation and Parks Month.
Thank you, Director Reese. Any comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for adoption.
Clerk, please call LaRoe.
Bangston Brown Dorance, favor Remy President Harden.
Thank you.
Adopted.
That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, sir. Press Protim. Councilmember in favor.
Thank you, Council President Harden. As I start my announcement and I have one resolution, I'd like to invite our guests from Open Door to come to the podium. This Wednesday, we are hosting the 2023 Housing for All Forum on July 12th from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM at Columbus State Community College's Mitchell Hall. This event will feature numerous community organizations, a panel of housing experts to answer questions from the audience, and a keynote address from Sonia Truss, the executive director of YIMBY Law, that's Yes in My Backyard. There is still time to RSVP. Please visit www.housingforallcbus.com to get more information. I encourage all residents to attend and learn more about housing resources available to them. Today and this month is also Disability Pride Month, and so it is my honor to present Resolution 0128X-2023 to recognize Open Door as a community leader in providing quality-affirming care for individuals with disabilities. July marks the anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, a landmark piece of legislation that broke down barriers to inclusion in society. More than 2.6 million Ohioans, or 28% of the state's population, have a disability, including nearly 100,000 individuals supported by Ohio's Development Disability System. Columbus has a proud history of openness and inclusivity, having developed a variety of accessible hotels, restaurants, attractions, and transportation options around the city. Open Door has been a direct care provider for adults with disabilities in central Ohio for more than four decades, with a proven track record of providing quality-affirming support for all people, including members of the LGBTQ+ community. With that being said, I would like to welcome Rebecca Sharp, the Chief Executive Director of Open Door, to provide some brief remarks.
All right. Well, first of all, I'll introduce the most important people here. We have Mr. Matt Beaver and Lee George, both who are citizens in the city and have been super involved in advocacy efforts, not only in the city but the state this year. So they're a little nervous like I am, so they asked me to, if they start speaking too much, to be quiet. But we do want to say a few words. Thank you. We are so honored to be here to recognize not only Open Door, but just your affirmation for disabilities and advocacy efforts that has been led by city council. And this time is to celebrate the folks in society that have made and continue to make huge contributions to us as a society, and sometimes are overlooked due to their disability or other status. So it also includes the intersections of ability, status, race, ethnicity, gender identity, sexuality, and other identities that continue to impact both the health and social outcomes of people with disabilities. The goal here is to not only move from one of social stigma and misconceptions to one of pride, acceptance, empowerment, and self-advocacy, and in the words of Matt, "Just I'm a person, just like everyone else, and I want to do just as everyone else does." So over three decades later, the ADA is so important, and many of us take that for granted, just like elevators, ramps, handrails, et cetera. But it's bigger than that, and we have some more work to do. So I asked Lee and Matt what they would want us to leave not only the council but everyone here with for this month, and they said, "Address ableism," which is the assumption that people with disabilities need fixed, or people define them by their disability. And if they could have people just stand up for that and nothing more, they would feel that the world's a better place. And also continue to advocate for accessibility. There's been many things, as we shared earlier, but just continue the housing and marriage equality for folks with disabilities, the adult-changing areas that have been a big subject lately, mental health services, employment, and healthcare. So I'm going to let Matt say a few words about that.
During the pandemic, we discovered that people were lonely, but we really didn't have a way to get out. So we developed our own virtual groups. We have on Mondays trivia and wellness, Tuesdays music, Wednesdays self-advocacy, and we also have self-... I forgot. Anyway, on Thursdays, that's fine. Thank you. We have podcast club and exercise. So we do things, and we also provide them a voice of what they need. I am considered to be the president of the virtual groups for everyone in them, and I go to a meeting once a month at Open Door and provide them a voice as to what they need so that the company knows and they can fix it.
Thank you. And lastly, you can take part in disability justice movement in thoughtful ways beyond this month. And as noted by Audra Lord, there is no such thing as a single-issue struggle, because we do not live single-issue lives. We can stand together for a disability movement while recognizing that many in the LGBTQ+ community also have disabilities. And Lee would like to say a few words regarding that, and then you will finish.
We came a long way from where we came from before. We are a long way ago. Such as marriage equality for people with disabilities. And one is, I guess, part of that is the social security. We will lose our social security if we choose to get married. So I don't like that too, wouldn't they? So that's it. Thank you.
And once again, thank you so much.
Well, thank you so much for the work that you do. And, you know, for me, this is quite the honor to be able to honor you all today. My aunt was diagnosed at a very young age with development disabilities and has lived well beyond what folks said that she would, or that she could, excuse me. And she has lived a productive and independent life because of the work that organizations like yours does all the time, for well over 50 years. I won't disclose her true age if she, you know, is watching today. But because of the work that organizations like you do around the disability movement and disability justice, you bring dignity to folks who absolutely deserve it. And so thank you for the work that your organization does, and to our great leaders who have joined you today. Are there additional comments from my colleagues this time? Well, with that, I'd move for passage.
Clerk, please call LaRoe.
Bangston Brown Dorance, favor Remy President Harden.
Adopted.
That is all from me, Council President.
Thank you. Councilmember Remy.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. I would like to invite former Representative Michael Curtin to the podium as I read Resolution 129X-2023 to strongly oppose Issue One, which, if passed at the August 8, 2023 special election, would require a 60% supermajority of Ohio voters to amend the state constitution, and we urge voters to vote no. Since 1912, Ohio law has required a simple majority of 50% plus one vote to approve an amendment to the Ohio Constitution. This past May, Ohio lawmakers passed a joint resolution by only a simple majority to place a measure now called Issue One on a special election ballot in August, making it more difficult to amend the Ohio Constitution, because Issue One would increase the approval threshold for state constitutional amendments from a simple majority of 50% plus one to a 60% supermajority. Ohio citizens use the constitutional amendment process to pass amendments without the legislative involvement. Issue One is a blatant effort by the legislature to sneak past Ohio voters in extreme measure that diminishes the powers of Ohioans and subverts the will of the people of Ohio. Be it resolved by the council of the city of Columbus that this council does hereby strongly oppose Issue One, which, if passed at the August 8, 2023 special election, would require a 60% supermajority of Ohio voters to amend the state's constitution, thereby making it more difficult to amend the state constitution and, as a consequence, frustrating the prospects of passing future ballot initiatives. Further, Columbus City Council urges voters to vote no on Issue One on August 8, 2023. This truly may be the most important thing that any one of us has ever voted on in our entire life. We all want to say in how our state is governed. And if you're wondering if this is a partisan issue or not, every living Ohio governor of both parties has come out against, former Ohio governor has come out against Issue One, along with the leaders of both political parties. It's not about any political party. This is about protecting our rights as citizens. And if you care about good schools, safe streets, fair wages, reproductive rights, and other investments in our community, we urge you to vote no on August 8 and tell the State House that in this country, in this state, and especially in this city, the power belongs to the people, not the politicians. As you will hear in a moment, the premise that we have, majority rule, was created to avoid too much power with the legislature and corruption in government. These same concerns face us today after the former Republican Speaker of the House just last week was sentenced to 20 years after creating the largest corruption case in this nation's history. Just sentenced. He accepted over $60 million as a bribe and created a $1.3 billion bailout. The FBI Special Agent in Charge called Ohio in a league of its own. Don't be duped. Our constitution, that our constitution needs protected. It's a deliberate attempt to take our voice away as citizens and ensure whoever is in power at the State House has almost absolute power to decide what is best for all Ohioans. It's not just the 60% supermajority. It's the fact that the signature threshold is applicable in all 88 counties, where today it's only 44. And the cure period is erased, something that would lead to one of the only states in the nation where this occurs. So you want to talk about special interests coming in in order to get something on the ballot? It almost guarantees and ensures that will happen. So if you're not registered to vote, today is the last day to do so. The Board of Elections is open until 9:00 PM tonight, or go to voteohio.org, and you can register to vote all day today. You can begin, if you are registered to vote, you can begin voting tomorrow at the Board of Elections at 1700 Morris Road. Or you can request an absentee ballot, because it's gotten harder. Make sure you bring your ID when you go vote. But with absentee ballot, you need the last four of your social, and they'll send you out an absentee ballot. So we ask that you join us on August 8 to come to the polls, to vote no on this attempt to silence your voice. Representative, happy to turn the floor over to you for more historical perspective.
Thank you, Councilmember Remy. President Harden, members of council. Thank you for your conscientious work to help defeat State Issue One. State Issue One is unprecedented in several ways. First, no General Assembly, not in 220 years of our statehood, has proposed a constitutional amendment to diminish a fundamental voting right of Ohioans. Second, no General Assembly has ever scheduled an August special election for a single constitutional amendment, much less one as monumental as State Issue One. Councilmember Remy is correct. This is the most monumental proposed amendment to our constitution in 111 years. Each General Assembly, all 134 of them till now, has honored the Constitution itself and honored the voters of Ohio by honoring the longstanding practice of scheduling proposed amendments to our Ohio Constitution for regular elections, and usually November elections. Just last December, as many of you recall, the General Assembly voted to eliminate all August special elections, except for certified fiscal emergencies, as certified by the state auditor. In his testimony in the House and Senate in favor of eliminating August elections, Secretary of State Frank LaRoe said, "August special elections should be eliminated because they waste tens of millions of dollars of taxpayer money." End quote. "Just a handful of voters end up making big decisions, and this is not how democracy is supposed to work." Close quote. That's what he said a few months ago. But now, here we are, witnessing the resurrection of an August special election specifically designed to minimize voter turnout in an attempt to sneak this monumental proposed amendment past the voters. It is the most cynical, the most outrageous abuse of power in the electoral history of our state. And it is designed to take away the most fundamental voting right Ohioans have had for 111 years, the right of the constitutional initiative that our ancestors fought for decades to achieve. Our ancestors fought to obtain this right because of the Ohio State House was among the most corrupt in the nation in the late 1800s and early 1900s. It was the era of the robber barons, and indeed, they were. The constitutional initiative won by our ancestors is the crown jewel of our state's 220-year experiment in democracy. Ohioans have not abused this right. They've been very judicious in its use. They've approved only 19 of 71 citizen-led initiatives over the last 111 years, a little over one-fourth. That is one reason. We are witnessing another unprecedented aspect of Issue One, although this one is a very positive one, as mentioned by Councilmember Remy. For the first time in our state's history, all living former governors, all four of them, and five former attorneys general, nine distinguished former leaders of our state with a combined 77 years of executive experience in leading this state, have spoken with one voice to denounce Issue One. This has never happened before. This attempt to strip Ohioans of this fundamental right is part of a national strategy being led by elitist and extreme right-wing forces who would rather deal with legislators than the people themselves, when the people have reason to want to deal with them. Last year, these right-wing elitists and extreme power brokers attempted this very same thing in Arkansas and South Dakota. The good people of South Dakota, the birthplace of the initiative in 1898, crushed the ballot issue 67% to 33%, and the good people of Arkansas smashed the same ballot issue 59% to 41%. Thank you for standing with Ohio's police officers, firefighters, EMTs, nurses, teachers, skilled construction workers, and more than 200 other organizations representing Ohio's hard-working taxpayers to ensure that the Buckeye State delivers a similar crushing defeat to State Issue One on August 8. It's the least we can do. Thank you for your attention. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you. If you have questions, I'd be happy to try to address them.
Thank you, Representative. I didn't quite give you your full bio, but, you know, of course, former editor of The Dispatch, 38 years as a newsman. I was just excited to hear what you might have to say. And thank you for your article in TheCleveland.com yesterday about the history of this. It's very informative. We know that we can turn to you for constitutional history and many others, so we appreciate it. But, you know, this state legislature has proven over and 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 over again that they will change the rules to circumvent cities from doing what they're allowed to do with home rule. They don't like something. This was put on by a joint resolution, not even signed by the governor. I mean, can you imagine us trying to put something on our ballot just by saying we're going to do a resolution? It's bull... Well, I won't say that.
Another unprecedented thing about this issue, that putting a, creating an election on a joint resolution is unprecedented, but our current Supreme Court gave them a pass on that.
Of course. I'll turn it over to any of my colleagues that might have a comment.
No, I will thank you, Councilmember, for bringing this resolution, and certainly thank you to Representative Curtin for being here. I think you have gained the reputation of being Mr. Democracy in this state. Time and time again, you come to us and lead the social conscience as we think about how we do good government and how we make sure that everyone has a voice. And I think that both of you got to the heart of this, that with this special election, democracy is on the ballot. We, as a council, don't take too many of these issue votes, but we thought it was important that we go on the record. And not only us, I will say that we are in conversation with all the councils, all the city councils of the large cities in the state of Ohio, who are all going to pass similar resolutions, because we have to speak with one voice, that this is wrong, and that majority still means 50% plus one. And so I just appreciate this and really would encourage all of our residents. The name of the game for this special election is that you don't show up. They are counting on us not coming out to vote on this one issue in August. I believe in Columbus. We will come out, and we will vote, and this council is supporting a no vote.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilmember in favor.
And because we know that everybody does not have the ability to come down to council or to even watch council on TV, it is really incumbent upon everyone in this space right now to tell five more people what is going on. I know that every time that I get an opportunity with a mic, I am talking to folks about what is coming next month. And a lot of folks still don't know that this election is literally right around the corner. And so let's take ownership of this. We know it's not right, but we still have to counteract it. And so if we take it upon ourselves to tell five, or however many folks you can in your circle, then we will get the result that we absolutely need in this state. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Councilmember Bangston.
Again, thank you for leading charge on this, Councilmember Remy, and always for being here and being that conscious voice in our community. I just wanted a couple of technical things to let folks know. Yes, the date for the special election is in August, but you can start voting tomorrow. The Early Vote Center opens in all of our counties, here in Franklin County, on July 11, and you can vote up and through that Sunday before Election Day. So again, folks are traveling during the summer. I understand that. And so if you can't make it on August 8, make sure that you go at some point, make a plan to vote either early in person. You can request absentee ballot and vote from the comfort of your home. But whatever you do, please go out and vote, and we encourage you to vote no on this. Because, again, I think it's been said, but I want to reiterate, this is not a Republican issue. This is not a Democrat issue. It is controversial for me to say this, but this is not even a reproductive rights issue. This is a Democratic issue about democracy. Regardless of where you are on any issue, it should be one vote for one person. And if folks feel so strongly about a certain issue, then they should show up in November and voice it one way or the other. But we should not be so shortsighted as to change our constitution and how we... But we should not be so shortsighted as to change our Constitution and how we, as a people, govern ourselves for this shortsighted and this legislator that has proven themselves to not care about the people, but care about who themselves in keeping power. So, again, vote early, make a plan to vote, and make sure you tell five folks.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you very much. And it's been used, what, 71 times in 111 years?
It's been... The citizen-led initiative has won 19 times in 71 attempts for a 26% rate, and those have delivered good government reforms. The 10 mil limit on unvoted property taxes, for example, county home rule, property tax classification, just one after another after another of good government reforms. The people have used that right responsibly.
Thank you, Representative. There's no other comments. I move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the row.
Banksen, Brown, Dorans, favor. Remy, President Harden.
Adopted.
Counsel President, that is all I have this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember. Are there any comments by our elected officials? Not right now. Are there any requests by members of council for the removal of ordinance or resolution from the consent portion of the agenda? Hearing none, may we now have a motion to waive reading of titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk? Is there a second? Clerk, please call the row.
Banksen, Brown, Dorans, favor. Remy, President Harden.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda?
Economic Development Committee ordinance is 1457, 1818, 1822, 1824, 1835, 1852, 1882, 1968, 1970, 1971-2023. Small and Minority Business Committee ordinance 1956-2023. Technology Committee ordinance is 1630 and 1755-2023. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance 1915-2023. Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance is 1800, 1807-2023. Education Committee ordinance 1931-2023. Public Utilities Committee Resolution 120X-2023, and ordinances 1676, 1698, 1713, 1715, 1727, 1728, 1733, 1750, 1821, 1837, 1884-2023. Building and Zoning Policy Committee ordinance 1904-2023. Housing Committee ordinances 1693, 1694, 1695, 1840, 2003, and 2012-2023. Criminal Justice and Judiciary Committee ordinance 1903-2023. Health and Human Services Committee ordinance is 1825, 1826, 1827, 1856, 1858, 1869-2023. Public Safety Committee ordinance 1830-2023. Administration Committee ordinance 1769-2023. Finance Committee ordinance is 1689, 1811, 1853, 1913, 1919, 1989-2023. Rules and Reference Committee ordinance 2052-2023. Zoning Committee ordinances 2016, 2017, 2046, 2049, 2055, 1953, 2018, 2047, 2050, 2054, and 2056-2023.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We don't have any speakers on the first reading, so the following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent action. Will the clerk now read those into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 130X and 131X-2023. Economic Development Committee ordinance 1696, 1697, 1757, 1758, 1763, 1849, 1850, and 1851-2023. Small and Minority Business Committee ordinance 17... Excuse me, 1793-2023. Technology Committee ordinance 1779-2023. Public Service and Transportation Committee Resolution 122X-2023. Ordinance is 1442, 1707, 1780, 1890, 1892, 1895, 1902, 1908, 1918-2023. Neighborhoods and Immigrant Refugee and Migrant Affairs Committee ordinance 1772 and 1999-2023. Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance is 1720, 1730, 1799, 1801, 1804, 1805-2023. Education Committee ordinances 1722 and 1832-2023. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 1201, 1470, 1519, 1530, 1600, 1606, 1611, 1664, 1723, 1724, and 2051-2023. Workforce Development Committee ordinance 1809-2023. Housing Committee ordinances 1762 and 1870-2023. Criminal Justice and Judiciary Committee ordinances 1877, 1929, and 1939-2023. Health and Human Services Committee ordinance is 1740, 1752, 1860, 1952, 1985, 1991-2023. Public Safety Committee ordinance 1683-2023. Environment Committee ordinances 1667 and 1886-2023. Administration Committee ordinance is 1791, 1992, 1994, 1995-2023. Finance Committee ordinance is 1725, 1729, 1743, 1854, 1887-2023.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have one speaker on the consent portion of the agenda. Mr. Nate Wilkins here is to speak in favor of ordinance 1870 and the Housing Committee. Welcome to council, sir.
1612, earlier today, Mr. Los Angeles Wilkins. I'll go speak in favor of this for a minute. This has been holding land bank for 2014. I believe this was a age-old house, probably built in 1920s. I believe it was a two-bedroom, one-bath. And I would be only for this 1557, 1559, East Maynard. It was a vacant house, really in bad condition, just what the property used to look like, but today it still sits as a vacant land. The only thing I would say, this property has been in the land bank since 2014 of July. And if we're going to continue to have property sit more than nine years in the city-county land bank or the state of Forfitterboro of Ohio, I'd like to see that to be pulled back to have property in the city land bank for more than two years. I'm all for this, but I want to see a home that's suitableized for multi-disability people, also visually impaired and multi-handicapped. I believe this was one parcel, but to my knowledge, it could be two separate properties, 1579... 1559 and 1557, East Maynard Avenue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Are there any follow-up or comments? Seeing none, are there any other questions or comments on the consent portion of the agenda? Hearing none, may I have a motion for approval of these items as united as consent by voice? Clerk, please call the row.
Mr. Banksen.
Yes, with the exception of 1870-2023, from which I'm abstaining.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Dorans.
Yes.
Ms. Faber.
Yes, with the exception of ordinances 1696 and 1763-2023, from which I'm abstaining.
Mr. Remy.
Yes.
President Harden.
Yes. Ordinance are passed with the noted exceptions. We'll now proceed with the second reading of 30-day postponed emergency legislation. The first committee to come before council is the Technology Committee chaired by Councilmember Banksen. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Tonight in Technology Committee, we have one piece of legislation for second reading, ordinance 1906-2023, to authorize the Director of the Department of Technology on behalf of the Mayor's Office to enter into a contract with IndiGov Corporation for software licensing services for the period July 1, 2023, to June 30, 2024, to waive the relevant provisions of the Columbus City Codes pertaining to competitive bidding, to authorize the expenditure of $105,580 from the Department of Technology Information Services Division Information Services Operating Fund, and to declare an emergency. Council President, at this time, I would move to postpone this ordinance until July 17th meeting.
Clerk, please call the row.
Banksen, Brown, Dorans, favor. Remy, President Harden.
Postponed.
Thank you. That's all I have this evening.
Oh, cool. Uh, no, I apologize. Next committee to come before council is the Public Service and Transportation Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Rosa de Bidea. In her absence, first, Councilmember Faber will read.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Tonight in Public Service and Transportation, we have ordinance 1842-2023, to amend the 2023 capital improvement budget, to appropriate funds within the Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund and the Community Development Act Fund, to authorize the transfer of funds between the Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund and Community Development Act Fund, to authorize the transfer of funds within the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with Decker Construction Company for the ADA Ramp Project's CDVG Curb Ramps 2023 Program, to authorize the expenditure not to exceed $2,323,633.82 from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund and from the Community Development Act Fund for the project, to repay any unused grant funds at the end of the grant period and to declare an emergency. Columbus is focused on creating compliant pedestrian access routes throughout the city. This project consists of constructing ADA-compliant curb ramps at 76 intersections. Additionally, this contract will construct new sidewalks and replace existing sidewalks in poor condition to complete compliant pedestrian access routes. The city of Columbus is committed to eventually having ramps at every intersection throughout the city. This is a major undertaking that will require a number of years and continued funding. If you would like to request a ramp or ramps at a particular location, please submit a 311 request. Are there any questions or comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, it move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Banksen, Brown, Dorans, favor. Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. That's all in the Public Service Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Neighborhoods, Immigrants, Refugee, and Migrants Affairs Committee. That committee is also chaired by Councilmember Rosa de Bidea. In her absence, Councilmember Dorans will read.
Thank you, Council President. In the Neighborhoods Committee, we have ordinance 1960-2023, to authorize the Director of the Department of Neighborhoods to enter into a beneficiary agreement, the United Way of Central Ohio, in support of the One Linden Schools Initiative, to authorize the transfer expenditure from the General Fund and declare an emergency. At the request of the Chair, who is unable to be here tonight, I first... I move to postpone this legislation to our next meeting on Monday, July 17th, by a voice vote.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row by voice.
Mr. Banksen.
Good day.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Dorans.
Yes.
Ms. Faber.
Yes.
Mr. Remy. President Harden.
Yes, ordinance is passed.
And Council President, that's all I have in the Neighborhoods Committee at this time.
Thank you, sir. Next committee to come before council is the Veterans, Seniors, and Disability Affairs Committee. That committee is also chaired by Councilmember Rosa de Bidea. That legislation will be read by Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Council President. This evening, I have ordinance 1710, 2023, to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into 32 service contracts with agencies listed on the attachment hereto to provide social nutritional services to older adults in central Ohio for the period of July 1, 2023, to September 30, 2024, to authorize the expenditure of $3,342,926 from the Recreation and Parks Grants Fund and to declare an emergency. The Central Ohio Area Agency on Aging of the Recreation and Parks Department was awarded federal funds from the Ohio Department of Aging for the continuation of services to older adults in central Ohio area, including Delaware, Fairfield, Fayette, Franklin, Licking, Madison, Pickaway, and Union Counties. This ordinance authorized the Director of Recreation Parks to enter 32 service contracts for the provision of home-delivered meals, adult daycare, health services, financial navigated services, housing assistance, counseling, supportive services, personal care, transportation, home repair, and legal services for the period of July 1, 2023, through September 30, 2024. Approximately 40,000 individuals are expected to be served. Director Reese, do you have anything you wish to comment?
No, thank you, Chair Brown.
Hearing none. Do my colleagues have any questions? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Banksen, Brown, Dorans, favor. Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Council President, may I move forward to Recreation and Parks?
Please.
Thank you, sir. In Recreation and Parks, I have ordinance 1798, 2023, to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into a grant agreement with the Ohio Public Works Commission for the Linden Green Line Project and accept a grant in the amount of $2,474,000 with a local match of $2,474,000, to authorize the appropriation of $247,000 in the Recreation and Parks Grants Fund 2028... 2022-83, to authorize the amendment of the 2022 capital improvement budget, to authorize the transfer of $2,474,000 within the Recreation and Parks Voted Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. In March of 2023, the department applied for a 2023 Clean Ohio Green Space Conservation Program grants fund to be used towards fee simple acquisition of abandoned rail corridor in the Linden and Northland communities, as authorized by ordinance 0440, 2023. In May of 2023, the department received notice that the $2,474,000 grant was approved. Today's legislation authorized the appropriation of this grant in the amount of local matching dollars for a total of $4,948,000 to bring the first-ever linear park in central Ohio to fruition. Again, Director Reese?
No, no, thank you, Chair Brown.
If there are no questions, again, for my colleagues, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Banksen, Brown, Dorans, favor. Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Also, this evening, I have ordinance 1802, 2023, to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks to modify an existing contract with DLZ Ohio for the Kilborn Run Sports Park Improvement Project, to authorize the transfer of $2,757,447,47.12 within the Recreation and Parks Voted Bond Fund, to authorize the amendment of the 2022 capital improvements budget, to authorize the expenditure of $2,757,447.12 from the Recreation and Parks Voted Bond Fund and to declare an emergency.
Thank you.
By modifying this contract, DLZ Ohio will be able to complete the design and construction documents for Kilborn Run Sports Park Improvement Projects. This modification was planned during the initial project scoping... project with the consultant. Director Reese, again.
No, thank you, Chair Brown. You have covered all information.
If there are no questions for my colleagues, again, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Banksen, Brown, Dorans, favor. Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Council President, may I move on to education? Please. Thank you, sir. In education, I have three ordinances. Ordinances 1475, 2023, to authorize and direct the Director of Office of Education to enter into a 2023 ESC Summer Program contracts with high-quality pre-kindergarten organizations that provide high-quality educational services, to authorize the expenditure of $773,250 from the General Fund and to waive competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code for $773,250. This legislation provides 32 high-quality pre-garden... pre-kindergarten centers with funding needed to run the 2023 Early Start Summer Programming. I have Director Smidell here to speak to the issue of the bid waiver request. Director Smidell, the floor is yours.
Chair Brown, President Harden, members of council, thank you for the opportunity this evening. This ordinance represents our summer program only. These are the same providers that we work with for the entire school year, so therefore, as we work with them for the entire school year, we ask to waive competitive bidding so that we could just continue working with them throughout the summer.
If there are no questions for my colleagues, I move for passage and I ask for a voice vote.
Is there a second? Was that a second? Okay. Clerk, please call the row.
Mr. Banksen.
By voice.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Dorans.
Yes.
Ms. Faber.
Good day.
Mr. Remy.
Yes.
President Harden.
Yes, ordinance is passed.
Also, this evening, I have ordinances 1721, 2023, to authorize the direct... authorize and direct the Director of the Mayor's Office of Education to enter into a contract with the YMCA of central Ohio for the purposes of planning and coordinating an after-school program for middle-school youth and providing direct services to Columbus youth, to authorize the expenditure of $1,400,000 from the General Fund and... the expenditure of $1,400,000 from the General Fund and to declare an emergency. As a reminder, this Office of Education conducted a pilot program serving 80 youth at three locations during the winter and spring of this year. Now, the Mayor's Office of Education is working with the YMCA of Central Ohio, Columbus City Schools, and the Boys and Girls Club of Central Ohio to develop and implement an after-school program for middle school youth for the time period of 2023 to 2024 school year. Over 300 Columbus middle school students will be served by Columbus City Schools, middle school buildings, Boys and Girls Clubs, YMCA branches, and other community sites beginning in September 2023. Again, Director Smidow, would you please speak to this legislation?
Chair Brown, President Harton, members of council, thank you for your consideration again. This is a continuation of the work that we did, uh, at the very end of the, of the previous school year. We worked with Boys and Girls Club and YMCA to start a pilot project, uh, for middle school students, uh, that was successful towards the end of the year. Uh, this is a continuation really of that work, but in a new school year. So, um, in addition to the work that they will be doing, providing direct services to our students, uh, they will help us develop a framework or a system for after-school students, uh, so we have consistent quality and data and metrics and things like that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Director Smidow. Uh, any questions or comments from my colleagues? If not, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Brown, Dorans, favor. Remy, President Harton.
Passed.
Also, this evening, I have ordinances, ordinance 1781-2023 to authorize the Director of the Office of Education to enter a contract with HMB Learning Circle Software LLC to provide ongoing technical support for the CE, CEE, Hi-Vive Data Platform, a program necessary to achieve the mayor's goal that every four-year-old in Columbus has access to high-quality pre-kindergarten education, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the city, Columbus City Codes, and to authorize the expenditure of $195,547. The Office of Education is requesting permission to contract with HMB Learning Circle Software LLC to provide ongoing technical support for the CEHI VE Data Platform. Director Smidow?
Chair Brown, President Harton, members of council, thank you again for your consideration. Uh, this platform is proprietary to HMB and to our Early Start Columbus Program. Uh, we've been using the same software for the last 10 years. Uh, it was developed by a partner of ours, a nonprofit, but was then sold to HMB, which is a private company. Uh, but we need to continue to work with HMB, again, because that software is proprietary to them.
Director Smidow, thank you. If there are no comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Brown, Dorans, favor. Remy, President Harton.
Passed.
Council President, that's all I have this evening, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next committee to come before council is the Public Utilities Committee, chaired by Press Proten.
Thank you, Council President. In the Public Utilities Committee, first, we have ordinance 1398-2023 to authorize amendment to the 2020 capital improvement budget, to authorize the transfer of funds and the appropriation of funds within the Water Pago Fund, to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to modify and increase the contract CMH Two Hill Engineers for the Parsons Avenue Water Plant Hydrochloric Disinfectant Improvement Project, and to authorize expenditure of up to $1,747,700 within the Water A geo Bond Fund to pay for the contract modification. Uh, this project will address the risks associated with gases chlorinated system while providing a safer storage and handling system for plant staff. Uh, the potential threat of an accidental release of this type of gas will be eliminated by this project. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Brown, Dorans, favor. Remy, President Harton.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1454-2023 to authorize amendment to the 2020 capital improvement budget, to authorize the appropriation and transfer of funds within the Sanitary Reserve Fund to the Sanitary Revolving Loans, Loan Fund, to authorize the appropriation of funds within the Sanitary Revolving Loan Fund, to authorize the Director, Department of Public Utilities to enter construction contract, BLD Services LLC, for the lateral lining blueprint North Linden One Oakland Park Medina Project, to authorize the transfer of cash and appropriation within the Sanitary Bond Fund and authorize expenditure of up to $8,111,783.73 from the Sanitary Revolving Loan Fund and the Sanitary Bond Fund to pay for the project. Uh, this project involves lining sanitary laterals, prevent excess storm water from entering the city's sanitary sewer system in the North Linden area. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Brown, Dorans, favor. Remy, President Harton.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1609-2023 to authorize amendment to the 2020 capital improvement budget, to authorize the transfer of funds and appropriations between projects within the Sanitary Bond Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into construction, enter into a contract professional design services with the Burgess and Nyepal for the Allen Creek Trunk Middle Phase D Sewer Rehabilitation Project, and to authorize expenditure of not to exceed $1,208,612.84 from the Sanitary Bond Fund for the contract. Uh, this project will rehabilitate a sewer that is in poor condition, thereby reducing the risk of potential collapse and resulting overflows that may occur in homes or receiving streams. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Brown, Dorans, favor. Remy, President Harton.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1615-2023 to authorize amendment to the 2022 capital improvement budget, to authorize the transfer of cash and appropriation between projects within the Storm Sewer Bond Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter a professional services contract, Resource International, and with CODRA Nemeth Engineering for the General Engineering Services Storm and Sanitary 2022 Project, and to authorize expenditure of up to $1 million from the Storm Sewer Bond Fund, from the Sanitary Bond Fund. Uh, this funding will provide general engineering services for system improvements and rehabilitation across the city that warrant immediate action due to increased discoveries during previous investigations or other studies of the infrastructure. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Brown, Dorans, favor. Remy, President Harton.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1766-2023 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities renew the contract with SGI Matrix LLC for security system parts, installation, maintenance, monitoring, repair, and support services for the Department of Public Utilities to waive the competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City Codes, to authorize expenditure of $33,210 split among the electricity, water, sanitary sewer, and storm operating funds and declare an emergency. This legislation authorizes the Director of Public Utilities renew a contract with SGI Matrix LLC for security system parts, installation, maintenance, monitoring, repair, and support services both for new installs and existing securities equipment for various locations of the Department of Public Utilities. This ordinance is being submitted as emergency in, in order to avoid a lapse in the necessary security equipment, uh, to provide the services under the contract. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Brown, Dorans, favor. Remy, President Harton.
Passed.
Thank you, Council Presidents. All I have in my committees at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next committee to come before council is the Housing Committee, chaired by Councilmember Faber. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Harton. The next few ordinances are creations or amendments to the community reinvestment area legislation. The CRA policy serves to incentivize the creation of affordable housing units and create accessibility for individuals and families through the inclusion of below-market rate units in higher-rent neighborhoods. Before we start, I think it's important for us to level set just a bit to ensure that we all have an understanding of the terms you will hear. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, defines and calculates Aryan Median Income, or AMI, for every region of the country. In Columbus, 100% AMI would reflect an individual who makes approximately $57,800 annually and able to pay $1,445 per month for rent without being rent burdened. A person is rent burdened if they are paying more than 30% of their income on housing. A family of four bringing in approximately $83,812 annually, paying around $2,100 per month for rent and utilities, would also be included in the 100% AMI category. An individual making $47,000 annually and able to pay $1,200 per month without being rent burdened would fall into the 80% AMI category. And a family of four would be bringing in approximately $67,000 annually, paying around $1,700 per month for rent and utilities without being rent burdened. And individuals making $35,000 annually and able to pay $880 per month without being rent burdened would fall into the 60% AMI category. And a family of four would be bringing in approximately $50,000 annually, paying around $1,200 per month for rent and utilities without being rent burdened. On June 27th, the Housing Committee held a hearing where we heard from developers on the three CRA amendments in the southeast area, CRA, far south CRA, and the west broad CRA, as well as the two proposed CRA creations, Crosswoods CRA and West Scioto CRA. If passed, the five proposed CRA ordinances that will be introduced tonight will result in over 640 affordable units in the City of Columbus, spanning from one-bedroom to four-bedroom units. Assistant Director Prosser, do you have anything you'd like to add at this time?
Chair, favor. Council President Harton and members of council, again, we just appreciate the opportunity to bring, uh, the amendments as well as the, uh, new creations before you. And, uh, as we look at the criteria that the department uses to evaluate when we bring these forward to council, we're really looking for whether or not it's going to bring affordability to an area where we not, we're not seeing that affordability, where we've lost access to some of those neighborhoods or communities. Uh, we're also looking at our 100% affordable projects, the ones that our developers are bringing throughout the community. This tool becomes incredibly important to supporting those projects and bringing those to the finish line. And finally, we look at whether or not the proposed projects bring units that we're not seeing, that the market's not bringing, family-sized units, um, other issues that we may not be seeing for, that can serve our families. Um, as we looked at these opportunities, we are pleased to bring them forward, uh, for your consideration, and we appreciate, uh, council's consideration of these, of this legislation.
Thank you, Ms. Prosser. So first, we have ordinance 1841-2023 to amend the far south CRA to modify its geographic boundaries, to provide that the city's existing community reinvestment area housing council shall serve as the housing council for the far south community reinvestment area as amended herein. The far south CRA was created in 2020 to facilitate the construction of new affordable housing units and encourage the remodeling of existing structures within the neighborhoods located within its boundaries. This ordinance will expand geographical coverage of the far south CRA, with its new boundaries being along Parsons Avenue, I-270, the Scioto River, and the Frank Refugee Expressway. The goal of this particular piece of legislation is to continue public-private partnerships in the far south area of Columbus and promote revitalization efforts while maintaining housing affordability. With that, I move to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Brown, Dorans, favor. Remy, President Harton.
Amended.
And I now move for passage as amended.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Brown, Dorans, favor. Remy, President Harton.
Agreed.
Thank you. Uh, next, we have ordinance 1843-2023 to repeal ordinance number 3358-2022 due to clerical errors and to amend ordinance number 1871-2022 for the far west broad community reinvestment area, to align with the updates located in chapter 4565 of the Columbus City Codes, to modify its geographic boundaries, to provide the city's existing community reinvestment area housing council shall serve as the far west broad community reinvestment area. In December 2022, council passed ordinance 3358-2022 to better align the far west broad CRA with Columbus City Code. However, after internal review, some clerical errors were discovered necessitating its repeal. This ordinance will also amend a modification to the far west broad CRA ratified last year, changing the boundaries of the CRA in order to more effectively promote the construction of affordable housing units and the revitalization of existing units. This ordinance will establish the far west broad CRA boundaries as Demores Road, Hall Road, the western edge of Columbus's corporate boundary, West Broad Street, Sullivan Avenue, and Clime Road. The project that will be included by the expansion of the far west broad CRA is Parkside Village by Metro Development. This development will bring 552 units of housing to the city, with 10% of units, or about 55 units, at 80% of the AMI Aryan Median Income, and 10% or 55 units at 60% of the Aryan Median Income, a total of 110 affordable units, and these will be dispersed between one, two, and three-bedroom units. With that, I'd move to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Brown, Dorans, favor. Remy, President Harton.
Amended.
I would now like to move for passage as amended.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Brown, Dorans, favor. Remy, President Harton.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1844-2023 to create the Crosswoods Community Reinvestment Area, to authorize real property tax exemptions as authorized by chapter 3735 of the Ohio Revised Code, and to provide that the city's existing community reinvestment area housing council shall serve as the housing council for the Crosswoods Community Reinvestment Area. The goal of the community reinvestment area is a neighborhood revitalization and stabilization. This ordinance seeks to extend the usage of this tool to the Crosswoods community area, a neighborhood resting between North High Street, Park Road, St. Kus Boulevard, and I-270. This ordinance will create the Crosswoods Community Reinvestment Area. The project will be included in this specific area will be located at 400 East Campus View Boulevard and will bring 396 units to the city. The project will have 10% of the units, or about 39 units, at 80% of the Aryan median income, and 10% at 60% of the Aryan median income, a total of 78 affordable housing units. I forgot to ask if there were any questions or comments. Way too excited. With that, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Brown, Dorans, favor. Remy, President Harton.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1845-2023 to create the West Scioto Community Reinvestment Area to authorize real property tax exemptions as authorized by chapter 3735 of the Ohio Revised Code, and to provide that the city's existing community reinvestment area housing council shall serve as the housing council for the West Scioto Community Reinvestment Area. This ordinance will establish the West Scioto Community and Reinvestment Area in West Columbus, with its boundaries existing alongside the North Wilson Road, Trebe Road, US Route 33, and the Norfolk Southern Corporation Railroad. The project related to the creation of the West Scioto CRA will bring 216 affordable units. All units will be at 60% of the Aryan median income with a range of one to four-bedroom units, which is absolutely awesome. Uh, are there any questions or comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Brown, Dorans, favor. Remy, President Harton.
Passed.
Thank you. And, um, President Harton, may I go back to page eight?
Please.
Uh, we have housing ordinance 1840-2023 to repeal certain sections of ordinance number 1507-2021 and ordinance number 1890-2022 for the southeast CRA to include newly annexed parcels within the outer geographic boundaries of the southeast CRA, to provide that the city's existing community reinvestment area housing council shall serve as the housing council for the southeast area community reinvestment area as amended herein. The southeast CRA was established in 2021 with the intent to incentivize new housing development and the repair of existing facilities through property tax exemptions. The ultimate goal is twofold: spur new housing developments and property revitalization efforts while ensuring that resulting units remain affordable through reducing the tax burden on the property owners. In keeping with the ever-changing geography and the needs of the city, this ordinance repeals and replaces certain sections of ordinance number 1507-2021 and ordinance number 1890-2022 to modify the boundaries of the existing southeast community reinvestment area. The City of Columbus needs more housing, and this ordinance will expand an effective tool to be able to do so. Are there any... Oh, my apologies. The project associated with the southeast CRA from the NRP and CD4 All People will bring 245 housing units to the City of Columbus and will span from one to four-bedroom units. All of the 245 units will be affordable, units spanning from 30% of the Aryan median income to 80% of the Aryan median income. Are there any questions or comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, I move to waive second reading on 1840-2023.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Brown, Dorans, favor. Remy, President Harton.
Waived.
And I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Brown, Dorans, favor. Remy, President Harton.
Passed.
Thank you. May I move on to criminal justice and judiciary?
Please.
Uh, tonight in criminal justice and judiciary, we have ordinance 1834-2023 to authorize and direct the administrative and presiding judge of the Franklin County Municipal Court to accept a grant award from the State of Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Correction to appropriate $2,589,856 from the unappropriated balance of the general government grant fund to the Franklin County Municipal Court and to declare an emergency. This ordinance authorizes the Franklin County Municipal Court to accept a grant in the amount of $2,589,856. The grant money will be used to aid the court's effort to reduce the number of offenders on probation supervision who violate the condition of their supervision through funding the salaries and benefits of 15 existing probation officers. These officers will provide pretrial assessments and supervision to defendants in custody awaiting arraignment in the municipal court and perform specialized supervision of individuals placed on electronic monitoring. The program will only include defendants appearing in municipal court arraignment in custody for criminal misdemeanor and/or operating a vehicle while impaired. Emergency legislation is requested so the grant funds can be used as close to the July 1, 2023 grant start date as possible. This will allow the salaries of 15 probation officers to be paid from the grant instead of the general fund, preserving general fund revenue. Are there any questions or comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Brown Dorance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. And finally, may I move on to Health and Human Services?
Please.
We have ordinance 1764-2023 to authorize the director of the Department of Development to enter into a nonprofit service contract with the Community Shelter Board for the purpose of continuing the city's support for men, women, and families who are experiencing or at risk of experiencing homelessness in Columbus, to authorize the payment of expenses starting January 1, 2023, and to authorize the expenditure of $5,389,650 from the general fund. This legislation authorizes the director of the Department of Development to enter into a nonprofit service contract with the Community Shelter Board in an amount up to $5,389,650 to administer five initiatives to address homelessness within the city of Columbus: continuum of care application, crisis response, outreach services, permanent supportive housing services, and the Safety Net Program. These programs will work towards ensuring the best outcomes for people facing homelessness in Columbus and Franklin County. CSB and its partners are providing services through the following crisis response initiatives for persons experiencing homelessness: Single Adult Crisis Response Program, assistance to families experiencing homelessness, assistance to pregnant women experiencing homelessness, and assistance for non-VA-eligible veterans. $1,537,704 will be allocated towards these programs. This ordinance will approve $117,000 in funding to a CSB for collaborative outreach efforts that seek to provide proactive engagement, referral to medical and behavioral health care, and linkage to emergency shelter and permanent housing. The CSB's Permanent Supportive Housing Services will receive $877,688 to provide its permanent supportive housing partners with funding for various supportive services to permanent supportive housing residents. These include onsite social services and/or referrals to physical and mental health agencies for formerly homeless individuals currently living in these units. And finally, this legislation allocates $2,847,258 for the CSB's Safety Net Program, an initiative that enables the continued operation of emergency shelters, related emergency shelter services, homelessness prevention, and transition services for persons experiencing or at risk of experiencing homelessness. Earlier this year, our community's point-in-time count, which happens annually in January, showed that homelessness in central Ohio is up more than 20% since last year. This is both heartbreaking and, quite frankly, unacceptable. As a community, we must do more. Last year, city council, along with CSB and key local partners, put together a warming shelter plan during the winter months. While this helped keep our residents safe on some of the coldest nights last year, it's simply not enough. Homelessness is a pervasive issue, and we need to start building more housing units, invest more in mental health, and explore creative options to combat homelessness to make an impact for our community. CSB has been a great partner with the city in leading with these efforts, and I am very proud of the leadership they are taking in this space. I believe we were going to be joined tonight by, yes, our new director, the new president and CEO of the Community Shelter Board, Ms. Shannon Isom, who is going to provide some remarks. Welcome back to council, Ms. Isom.
I'm Shannon Isom, president and CEO of the Community Shelter Board. I want to thank you, Chair Faver, as well as the leadership, the esteemed leadership of this city council. I'd like to note that the Community Shelter Board continues to abide by our duty to this county, to this region, to this city, to respond. We do not take it lightly that the issues that we have here, which are strident, which are rigorous, that there must be resolved, there must be cure. We take on this challenge with the city. We also understand that outside of homelessness, there is a continuum of destabilization of housing, which we also intently are focused on. We will coordinate, as well as commit, a system effort that not only responds to crisis, but to do outreach, to do housing, to do Safety Net, but also to make sure and ensure that we are directing our continuum of care with excellence to ensure that we stay competitive nationally. Must say that this $5.4 million cannot be used with good partners, and that I stand here with resolve, but also with reflection for their commitment to the nonprofits within this community that are committed to curing for homelessness. So I'll take any questions, but thank you.
Are there any questions for Ms. Isom? Well, let me just, once again, I will continue to welcome you officially back to Columbus, but also just to say thank you. We appreciate your leadership and the eagerness that you have taken to really tackle our issues, and so we're excited to be a partner with CSB in this effort.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I move for passage.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Mr. Bangston.
I'm staying.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Dorance.
Yes.
Ms. Vaver.
Yes.
Mr. Remy.
Yes.
President Harden.
Yes, ordinance is passed.
Thank you. And that... Well, I think I have another one. Should I go on to rules and reference?
Sure.
Thank you. Tonight in rules and reference, we have ordinance 1839-2023 to repeal and amend Chapter 4565 of the Columbus City Codes to alter the affordable housing requirements applicable and market-ready, ready for revitalization, and ready-for-opportunity community reinvestment areas and to incorporate certain administrative modifications. In July 2018, city council passed ordinance 2184-2018, adopting Chapter 4565 of the Columbus City Codes to retain certain entities seeking CRA abatements in post-1994 CRAs to meet certain affordable housing requirements. The designated areas are three categories: market-ready, ready for revitalization, or ready for opportunity. Generally speaking, the area designations reflect the extent to which housing within the CRA is blighted. Development projects located in areas with less blight must satisfy higher affordable housing requirements in order to receive the abatement. Pursuant to Chapter 4565, the area designation assigned to each CRA must be reassessed every three years. This code change will alter the reassessment dates going forward to ensure that uniform review dates are applied to all CRAs. In addition to amending the triennial reassessment dates, this code change will formalize or codify existing implementation practices, add additional language to clarify program requirements, add requirements to the code that meet the spirit of the policy but had not been formally codified. Assistant Director Prosser, would you like to speak to this ordinance as well?
Certainly. Thank you, Chair Faver, President Harden, and members of council. This was the result of some work that was done by staff in our department and really looking at the implementation of the policy over the last year and understanding where we had some practices that we were doing but had not been formally codified, and this became an opportunity to do that. In addition, we were able to look at things that maybe we do in practice that are in spirit of the ordinance but certainly had not been formally done in practice, director's rules, or in the code. So this became that opportunity. One example, which I think meets the spirit of the policy as we all intended, is that we don't want to see the affordable units that are required as part of the policy segregated into a single portion of a building or into a building that is separated from the amenities or other parts of the project. We want to make sure that those affordable units are dispersed throughout the projects and making sure that those residents and families have access to all the amenities and opportunities in that project. Those were things that we felt as we were looking at the spirit of the code, but certainly hadn't formalized in any way. So the code changes will update that, making it clear to our development partners of what the expectation is for that abatement and what we expect on the affordability, but also making sure that our staff has clear direction on what they knew as they implemented as well. We appreciate council's consideration of these updates and certainly appreciate our staff's diligent work to make sure that we are providing a policy and implementation that meets all the goals that we have for it.
Thank you, Ms. Prosser. You know, before I move to pass, I think hopefully one thing is very clear, and I think I speak for everyone on the dais, that we wholeheartedly believe that housing is a human right, period. And tonight's several pieces of legislation demonstrate that this council and this administration is tackling our housing crisis, our homeless crisis, and our eviction crisis head-on. And so I just want to extend my appreciation to the Department of Development, our partners like CSB, as we continue to work collectively to address some of the most pressing issues that we're facing in our community. With that, I move for passage.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Brown Dorance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. That's all out of my committees.
All right. Six twenty-three. We'll go ahead and start. The next committee to come for council is the Safety Committee, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Remy. Councilmember Remy, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. I just want to start off real quick to acknowledge and thank our divisions of Police and Fire, Chief Bryant, Chief Hap, Director Pashati, for a very successful inaugural Public Safety Week. It was a week-long event in the Milo-Grogan community where we handed out fire extinguishers, smoke and carbon monoxide alarms, steering wheel locks, gun cables. We even got 137 fire hydrants painted in the neighborhood that week. So thank you, Councilmember Dorance, for your team's work in that regard. But it was a great week and had a lot of opportunities to engage with our community, our community to engage with our first responders, and hopefully get the message out that we are working very hard to build relationships with the community and looking forward to next year. So I will go ahead and get started. Also wanted to acknowledge the two officer-involved incidents, shootings this weekend, and send our heartfelt prayers to the officer that was shot in the leg on I-70. Certainly, it's almost insanity when you think about people driving around thinking that they can shoot at our police officers, our first responders, and think that that's okay. This is not okay. This is not something that we are going to accept as a city, and certainly, we shouldn't accept as humans. And so, you know, whatever goes through your mind when you have a gun, and I know you're not going to hear this, you know, I ask people and implore people to talk with their neighbors, talk with their kids, talk with their families, talk with... Let's put the guns down. It just doesn't make any sense. First ordinance I have this evening is ordinance 1593-2023 to authorize a city auditor to transfer monies between projects in the Public Safety Capital Improvement Fund, to authorize the director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into contract with Intredo Life and Safety Solutions Corporation for the upgrade of the city's 911 system pursuant to the sole source provisions of the Columbus City Codes, to authorize an amendment to the 2022 capital improvement budget and the expenditure in the amount of up to $1,269,677.07 within the Public Safety's Capital Improvement Fund. The city of Columbus operates a fully redundant, geodiverse set of public safety answering point controllers that currently support operations at the Columbus Wireless PSAP and Columbus Backup PSAP. The Division of Support Services upgraded the existing 911 system in 2012 with an additional upgrade in 2016 for text and 911 compatibility. This current upgrade will procure new hardware as well as upgrade the software to ensure compliance with NINA standards and provide continued services. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Brown Dorance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, I have ordinance 1639-2023 to authorize the Finance Management Director to associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with calls LLC, HiCom, Vance's, Granger, Lawman's, and GenCo for the purchase of uniforms and accessories to the Division of Police from existing universal term contracts and to authorize the expenditure of $3,181,366 from the general fund. The Division of Police needs to procure uniform footwear, leather goods, uniform accessories, and protective wear for police officers, recruits, and some civilian employees. This ordinance will enable Division to purchase these uniforms and accessories in accordance with the universal term contracts established for this purpose by the purchasing office. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Brown Dorance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, I have ordinance 1672-2023 to authorize the director of the Department of Public Safety on behalf of the Division of Police to enter into contract with PennLink Limited to purchase and install an upgraded computer software system that aids in obtaining and analyzing electronic information, crucial to resolving cases to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Codes, and to authorize the expenditure of $424,791.50 from the law enforcement contravail seizure fund. PennLink is a computer software investigative tool that takes in historical data from search warrants. The information may come from different electronic sources such as cell phones and social media accounts. The new upgraded system will allow investigators to conduct live monitoring, view conversations in real time with images and videos. The updated system will allow users to map, call, and ping locations on suspects. A new sharing feature will also allow users access to a larger database to search and to determine if a subject is under investigation by other law enforcement agencies. Director, can you speak to the waiver of competitive bidding, please?
Yes, sir. Council President Harden, Chair Remy, council members, this original contract that was competitively bid in 2013, PennLink remains a sole source provider for all PennLink products. Therefore, the Division is requesting a bid waiver in order to purchase the upgrades to this product. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Director. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Brown Dorance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, I have ordinance 1898-2023 to authorize the director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into a contract with Gay Shift, Gray Shift LLC to purchase a digital license and a forensic unit to extract digital evidence from electronic devices, to waive competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Codes, to authorize the expenditure of $83,670 from the general government grant fund, to authorize a transfer of $83,670, and to declare an emergency. The Division needs to enter into contract with Gray Shift LLC to purchase Gray Key Premier Mobile License and Gray Key Forensic Unit, which will be used in the mobile response vehicle. The unit and license in the vehicle will provide a portable platform on scenes to gather information for field investigations or situations more rapidly and increase digital extraction efficiently. With this hardware and software, the DFU detectives gain an evidentiary advantage by having the ability to unlock and decrypt more electronic devices and extract more evidence to solve crimes. Director, can you speak about this ordinance's waiver of competitive bidding?
Council President Harden, Council Chair Remy, this bid waiver is due to the fact that we currently have the Gray Key software, and it's being used by the digital forensics unit. This will keep us compatible. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Brown Dorance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, I have ordinance 1976-2023 to authorize the director of Public Safety to enter into a contract with Tablet Command, Inc. for CAD application programming interface integration services on behalf of the Division of Fire, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code, to authorize the expenditure of $28,859 from the general fund, and to declare an emergency. The Fire Division uses Tablet Command's proprietary software for receiving computer-aided dispatching incident information directly at fire ground and emergency response scenes. This contract for software integration services will allow for upgraded two-way communications between existing fire ground communications and the Fire Division's fire computer-aided dispatching system. Upgrades include the ability to post-final real-time incident-related comments, vehicle status, and locations directly from the emergency scene to fire dispatchers, and provided augmented emergency response communications. Director, could you speak to this one on the relation to waiver of competitive bidding?
Council President Harden, Council Chair Remy, council members, the Division of Fire successfully implemented this specialized software with Tablet Command, who is the proprietary owner of its contents, and there's no other vendors that can offer this service. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Brown Dorance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
With your permission, I move to administration. Great. In administration, I have one ordinance this evening, ordinance 2045-2023, to accept the proposed collective bargaining agreement between the city of Columbus and the Communications Workers of America Local 4502, April 24, 2023 through April 23, 2026, to provide wages, hours, and other terms and conditions of employment for employees in the bargaining unit as provided in the attachment here, too, and to declare an emergency. The CWA membership, which includes 1,681 members working in departments such as the Auditor's Office, Building and Zoning Services, celebrate... departments such as the Auditor's Office, Building and Zoning Services, Celebrate One, Civil Service, Department of Neighborhoods Technology Development, Finance and Management, Public Safety, Public Service, Public Utilities, and Rexham Parks, have already voted in favor of this contract, and we are very excited to see this contract come forward. I want to thank CWA President Susan Wilson and her team, and the Administration Director Nikki Brandon and her team for their work in getting our hard-working employees what they need for the city of Columbus to be a top employer in this region. The give-and-take between the parties has resulted in a fair agreement that benefits both the members and the city. Director Brandon, would you like to say a few words in regards to this ordinance this evening and the incredible work that your department did in order to accomplish this?
Thank you, President Harden and Chair Reemy, members of council. I just want to thank, repeat what you said, and thank the teams that were involved, as well as our chief negotiator, Jenny Edwards with Baker Hostetler. And this year, we did do something a little different. We had civil service, the Department of Finance, the Auditor's Office, and the City Attorney's Office at the table with us. That did make a difference. We had real-time, you know, in-the-room answers available to us. I think it helped. So I just want to thank all of those who were involved, as well as my team, and thank you for your favorable consideration tonight.
Thank you so much for the work that was done within your department. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues this evening? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the roll.
Bangston Brown Dorance favor, Reemy President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. That is all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is there motion to recess? Clerk please call the roll.
Bangston Brown Dorance favor, Reemy President Harden.
We will reconvene for zoning in five minutes.
Number thirty-five will now come to order. Clerk please call the roll.
Bangston Brown Dorance favor, Reemy President Harden.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal?
Second.
Clerk please call the roll.
Bangston Brown Dorance favor, Reemy President Harden.
Are there any additions or corrections to the Journal? Hearing none, the Journal is approved. Will now go to the zoning committee. President Pro Tim Dorance chairs that committee. All members are on it. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Before beginning tonight's zoning agenda, a little bit of housekeeping. Will the clerk please read the numbers of legislation in the zoning committee this evening that require waiver of second reading?
Nineteen twenty dash twenty-three, nineteen twenty-four, nineteen twenty-seven, nineteen forty-six, nineteen fifty, nineteen twenty-one, nineteen twenty-two, nineteen thirty-eight, nineteen forty-seven, nineteen fifty-one, dash twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, clerk. I now move to waive second reading on those items.
Clerk please call the read.
Bangston Brown Dorance favor, Reemy President Harden.
Uh, waived.
Thank you. Now, allow me to briefly explain. Our current rules pertain to speaking before council on rezonings and variances. We only hear staff presentations or ordinances that have disapproval from a recommending body, or if you have a public speaker signed up to speak against an ordinance. All speakers on council variances, including city staff, area commissioners, applicants, and members of the public, will be sworn in before they give testimony. Representatives of the area commission applicants are always able to speak in an ordinance and do not need to fill out a speaker slip. We have received zero public speaker slips for legislation here tonight. On the advice of the City Attorney's Office, I would now swear in city staff. Please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer to pains or penalty of perjury? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Thank you. Please let the record reflect that Tim Dietrich from the Department of Building and Zoning Services and Daniel Moorhead from the Department of Public Service have been sworn in. First, we have ordinance one nine two zero dash twenty twenty-three to rezone one one six one Franklin Avenue, being point two-five-plus acres located in the southeast corner of Franklin Avenue and South Champion Avenue from R3 Real District to AR1 Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Shanghai Enterprises LLC, care of Dave Perry Agent, proposes use of multi-unit residential development. City's Department of Recommendation is approval. Development Commission's Recommendation is also approval. Near East Area Commission's Recommendation is approval as well. Do my colleagues have questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the roll.
Bangston Brown Dorance favor, Reemy President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance one nine two four dash twenty twenty-three to rezone two eight zero two East Fifth Avenue, being point one eight-plus acres located in the northeast corner of East Fifth Avenue and Morris Avenue from C2 Commercial District to C4 Commercial District. The applicant is Umbuck Motors LLC, proposes use of commercial development. City's Department of Recommendation is approval. Development Commission Recommendation is approval. East Columbus Civic Association's Recommendation is also approval. Do my colleagues have questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the roll.
Bangston Brown Dorance favor, Reemy President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance one nine two seven dash twenty twenty-three to amend ordinance number three one four three dash twenty twenty-one, passed May ninth, twenty twenty-two, for a property located at four fifty-seven Cleveland Avenue by repealing section three and replacing it with a new section three to modify the CPD text and plan as it pertains to the addition of code modifications to aisle with a manufacturing and maneuvering standards and revised parking spot reduction. The applicant is Halfback Holdings LLC, care of Colby Turnick, agent, proposes use is an ordinance amendment. The City's Department of Recommendation is approval. The Historic Resource Commission Recommendation is also approval. At this time, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the roll.
Bangston Brown Dorance favor, Reemy President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, I have ordinance one nine four six dash twenty twenty-three to amend ordinance number two nine five three dash twenty twenty-two, passed November fourteenth, twenty twenty. The property located at one three 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 Edge Hill Road by repealing section one and replacing it with new section one to modify the legal description of the property. The applicant is WCECP Edge Hill LLC, care of Dave Perry Agent, proposes use as a ordinance amendment. City's Department of Recommendation is approval. Fifth by Northwest Area Commission's Recommendation is also approval. Do my colleagues have questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the roll.
Bangston Brown Dorance favor, Reemy President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance one nine five zero dash twenty twenty-three to rezone one four eight zero Chesapeake Avenue, being point one six-plus acres located in the north side of Chesapeake Avenue, five hundred-plus feet east of North Star Avenue from R Real District to AR1 Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Eric Martinu, proposes use of a multi-unit residential development. City's Department of Recommendation is approval. Development Commission Recommendation is approval. Fifth by Northwest Area Commission's Recommendation is also approval. Do my colleagues have questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the roll.
Bangston Brown Dorance favor, Reemy President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. We now move into the council variances portion of the agenda. We have first ordinance one nine two one dash twenty twenty-three to grant a variance provisions of section three three oh nine point one four height district three three two one point zero B one two vision clearance, three 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 point one five C base computing area, three 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 point one eight D two building lines, three 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 point two three MIM side yard permitted Columbus City Coast, the property located at one one six one Franklin Avenue, to permit a reduced development standards for apartment building in AR1 Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Shanghai Enterprises LLC, care of Dave Perry Agent, proposes use of a multi-unit residential development. City's Department of Recommendation is approval. Near East Area Commission's Recommendation is also approval. I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk please call the roll.
Bangston Brown Dorance favor, Reemy President Harden.
Accept it.
And next move to adopt the findings of staff and the findings of council.
Clerk please call the roll.
Bangston Brown Dorance favor, Reemy President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you. And finally, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the roll.
Bangston Brown Dorance favor, Reemy President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance one nine two two dash twenty twenty-three to grant a variance provisions of section three 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 two point zero three five R3 Residential District, three 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 two point one nine fronting, three 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 two point two one D building lines, three 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 two point two seven rear yard of the Columbus City Codes, the property located at three two nine Loffler Avenue, to permit a four-unit dwelling and three-unit dwelling on the same lot with reduced development standards in the R3 Residential District, and to repeal ordinance number one seven eight zero dash twenty nineteen, passed on July twenty-second, twenty nineteen. The applicant is Loffler Development LLC, care of Dave Perry Agent, proposes a multi-unit residential development. City's Department of Recommendation is approval. Near East Area Commission's Recommendation is also approval. I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk please call the roll.
Bangston Brown Dorance favor, Reemy President Harden.
Accept it.
And next move to adopt the findings of staff and the findings of council.
Clerk please call the roll.
Bangston Brown Dorance favor, Reemy President Harden.
Adopt it.
And finally, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the roll.
Bangston Brown Dorance favor, Reemy President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance one nine two three dash twenty twenty-three to grant a variance provisions of section three three six seven point oh one M two manufacturing district, three three six seven point one five CD M two manufacturing district special provisions in three three eight nine point zero three two animal kennel or animal shelter at the Columbus City Coast, the property located at two nine one zero Scioto Derby Executive Court, to permit a animal boarding with outside run. Darby Executive Court, to permit a animal boarding with outside runs in the M2 Manufacturing District. The applicant is DBT Group LLC, care of Craig Moncrief, attorney, proposes use of the animal boarding facility with outside runs. City's Department Recommendation is approval. West Scioto Area Commission's Recommendation is also approval. I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Brown, Dorans, favor. Re-Meet President Harden.
Accept it.
And next move to adopt the findings of staff as the findings of council.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Brown, Dorans, favor. Re-Meet President Harden.
Adopt it.
Next move to amend to emergency.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Brown, Dorans, favor. Re-Meet President Harden.
Amended.
And finally, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Brown, Dorans, favor. Re-Meet President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1938-2023 to grant a variance provisions of Section 3363.01 Manufacturing District, for the property located at 45 West Bartman Avenue, to permit a multi-unit residential development in Manufacturing District. The applicant is NRP Properties LLC, care of Dave Perry, agent. Due to representatives from NRP Properties being unable to attend tonight's meeting, I move to refer this legislation back to committee.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Brown, Dorans, favor. Re-Meet President Harden.
Refer back to the committee.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1943-2023 to grant a variance provisions of Section 3332.38H Private Garage is 3312.13 Driveway and 3332.38G Private Garage of the Columbus City Coast, property located at 2354 Dunning Court, permit a habitable space above detached garage with increased height in the R2 Residential District. The applicant is Jalen Coles, care of Fred Hutchinson, an architect, proposes use a habitable space above a detached garage. City's Department Recommendation is approval. The North Central Area Commission's Recommendation is approval as well. I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Brown, Dorans, favor. Re-Meet President Harden.
Accept it.
Move to adopt the findings of staff as the findings of council.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Brown, Dorans, favor. Re-Meet President Harden.
Adopt it.
And next move to amend to emergency.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Brown, Dorans, favor. Re-Meet President Harden.
Amended.
And finally, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Brown, Dorans, favor. Re-Meet President Harden.
Pass.
Next, we have ordinance 1947-2023 to grant a variance provisions of Section 3333.03AR3 Apartment Residential District Use, 3309.14 Height Districts, 3312.21B3D1 Landscaping and Screening, 3312.49 Minimum Number of Parking Spaces Required, 3333.15C Base Computing Area, 3333.18D Building Line, 3333.24 Rear Yard, 3372.604 Setback Line, and 3372.605AD Building Design Standards of the Columbus City Coast, property located at 1333 Edge Hill Road, permit a non-accessory parking use in the R3 Apartment Residential District, and reduce development standards in the AR3 Apartment Residential District. And M Manufacturing District for a mixed-use development and repeal ordinance number 2954-2022, passed November 14, 2022. This is a companion variance to a rezoning ordinance 1946-2023 that we passed a few moments ago. The applicant is WCECP Edge Hill LLC, care of Dave Perry, agent, proposes use of a mixed-use development. City's Department Recommendation is approval. The fifth by Northwest Area Commission's Recommendation is disapproval. Due to that disapproval from the area commission, we will now hear a staff presentation. Mr. Dietrich, floor is yours.
Chair Dorans, President Harden, members of council. Ordinance number 2954-2022, passed November 14, 2022. A concurrent council variance to rezoning Z21-104 included a use variance for non-accessory parking in the AR3 Apartment Residential District, and standard variances for increased height and lot coverage, and reduced building setbacks and rear yard for proposed apartment building, and also included reduced building design standards for a proposed retail building in the M Manufacturing District. This ordinance includes a modified legal description and revisions to the approved variances resulting from the final engineering of the site design. Additional variances to parking lot screening and landscaping, maximum parking numbers, and a building design standard for required main entrance along the East Fifth Avenue frontage for the proposed retail establishment are included in this ordinance. Additionally, a new site plan demonstrating the previously mentioned revisions have been included, and staff supports the additional variances needed to complete this mixed-use development.
Thank you, Mr. Dietrich. Do my colleagues have any questions for the department at this time? Seeing none, I want to invite Mr. Dave Perry, the agent for the applicant forward. Dave, welcome back to council.
Thank you.
I'll swear in real quick, and we'll get to your comments. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer to pains or penalty of perjury? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Thank you. Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, President Harden, Chair Dorans, and all council members. My name is Dave Perry. I'm here as agent tonight for Alfred, Inc., and Aldi Grocery Stores. As Tim Dietrich mentioned, in November of '22, you passed both the rezoning and variance ordinance for an apartment complex and a new grocery store at Fifth and Edge Hill in the Fifth by Northwest Commission area, that both zoning and variance were supported by Fifth by Northwest Commission, city staff, and the Development Commission. What has happened since November is Alfred has moved forward with construction documents for the apartment complex, and Aldi Grocery Stores has moved forward with construction documents for the grocery store. And we have found that a couple amendments to the ordinances from November of 2022 are needed. A few minutes ago, you passed the amendment of the zoning ordinance that made a slight change to the legal descriptions, so that that portion is completed, and before you at the moment is the amendment of the variance ordinance. The Aldi Grocery Store fronts on West Fifth Avenue. West Fifth Avenue is an urban commercial overlay street, as identified in the zoning code, and there are certain, certain standards of setback and glass and appearance-related items that go with the urban commercial overlay. One of those things is the urban commercial overlay requires a main entrance, pedestrian entrance, on the urban commercial overlay corridor, West Fifth Avenue in this case. Now, the architecture that was shown to staff and the area commission and the development commission in November and prior is the same tonight. There's been no change in the building. West Fifth Avenue still has a door. What has happened, as Aldi has developed construction drawings and, and floor plans that meet their operational needs, is the request embodied in the, in the amendment ordinance tonight is to not use the West Fifth Avenue door as a main entrance door. They have found that, they have found floor plan-wise that the north portion of the building is where inventory needs to go and other operational functions, and the south entrance, where the parking lot is located, is, is where will be the main entrance, it will be where cashier functions are located, and supervisor on duty and that type of thing. So that's, that's the issue. The, the fact of the matter is, you know, it's not, it's not impossible by any means that someone would walk to the store to, to get a couple of small items, but with, with all of us, our grocery shopping is often car-oriented, it's on the way home from work, it's on Saturday or Sunday, and the bulk of the use of the site is going to be from the south entrance. So, that, that's the, that's the, the gist of the issue. As I work in all of the urban commission areas, what I hear constantly is bring us a grocery store. And that was the message from Fifth by Northwest Commission in November, and they still want the grocery store. I think the, I think the question on, or the, the, the issue on the no vote is, is that they, they would prefer the pedestrian entrance, it's not that they don't want the grocery store.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Do my colleagues have any questions for the applicant this time? But, Mr. Perry, just to sort of summarize as quick as possible, the, essentially, this variance boils down to where's the placement of the door, whether or not it's, and again, there's not a, we're not changing, the, the other door is still there, but where's the main entrance and exit is, is directly on the parking lot, if this variance were to pass, correct?
Correct, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions from councilmembers this time? Thank you. I don't believe we have anyone here from the Fifth by Northwest Area Commission. If so, please raise your hand. I don't see anyone here tonight. We've had active conversations with the commission, based on the, the minor nature of, of the placement of the door. I don't, you know, well, reasonable minds can differ about where that's located. I don't see any reason for us to hold this project up at this point, so I'm going to first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Brown, Dorans, favor. Re-Meet President Harden.
Accept it.
Next, move to adopt the findings of staff as the findings of council.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Brown, Dorans, favor. Re-Meet President Harden.
Adopt it.
Finally, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Brown, Dorans, favor. Re-Meet President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1948-2023 to grant a variance provisions of Section 3353.03C2 Permitted Uses, 3361.02 CPD Permitted Use of the Columbus City Coast, property located at 7654 Crosswoods Drive, to carry, to permit a pharmacy in a CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is SBH Medical, care of Jackson Reynolds, attorney, proposes use of a pharmacy. City's Department Recommendation is approval. Far North Columbus Coalition's Recommendation is also approval. I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Brown, Dorans, favor. Re-Meet President Harden.
Accept it.
Next, I move to adopt the findings of staff as the findings of council.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Brown, Dorans, favor. Re-Meet President Harden.
Accept, uh, accept it.
I next move to amend as emergency.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Brown, Dorans, favor. Re-Meet President Harden.
Amended.
And finally, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Brown, Dorans, favor. Re-Meet President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And finally, we have ordinance 1954-2023 to grant a variance provisions of Section 3333.02 AR12, ARLD, AR1 Apartment Residential District Uses, 3312.21D1 Landscaping and Screening, 3333.09 Area Requirements, 333.16 Fronting, 333.18 Building Lines, 3333.23A Minimum Side Yard permitted, and 3333.24 Rear Yard of the Columbus City Coast, property located at 1480 Chesapeake Avenue, to permit a two-unit dwelling on one lot with reduced development standards in the AR1 Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Eric D. Montanu, proposes use of a two-unit dwelling development. City's Department Recommendation is approval. Fifth by Northwest Area Commission's Recommendation is also approval. I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Brown, Dorans, favor. Re-Meet President Harden.
Accept it.
Thank you. I next move to adopt the findings of staff as the findings of council.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Brown, Dorans, favor. Re-Meet President Harden.
Adopt it.
Finally, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Brown, Dorans, favor. Re-Meet President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, Council President. That's all we have on tonight's zoning agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Seeing no further business coming before the zoning committee, is there a motion to adjourn? Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Brown, Dorans, favor. Re-Meet President Harden.
Meeting is adjourned.
Meeting is reconvened. We are going to the final committee of the council to see which I chair. The first ordinance to come before council is 0089X-2023. We have to adopt the 2024 tax budget and to authorize and direct the city auditor to submit said budget to the county and to declare an emergency. The county tax budget is a state-mandated process that we and our city auditor follow to receive our city's portion of local government funds. As in years past, along with the second reading of this resolution tonight, we will also conduct a public hearing on this matter. This evening, I have Ms. Darlene from the auditor's office here. Oh, no. No, I don't have any speakers, right? I believe we have Deputy Auditor Darlene Wilds present, and I'll throw it over to her for the hearings.
Thank you, Council President Harden, members of council. Tonight, the city auditor asks for your approval of the 2024 tax budget. As you know, the process of the tax budget and annual function is provided by the Ohio Revised Code and requires that the city prepare and, and adopt a resolution setting forth the city's estimate of resources for the next year. Upon your approval, the 2024 tax budget will be submitted to the county budget commission before the required date of July 20. Once the tax budget is accepted by the county, the city auditor will request the council pass another resolution to accept the amounts and rate set forth by the county budget commission based upon our 2024 tax budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Auditor Wilds. With those comments, that concludes the public hearing on this matter. I move for adoption of the resolution.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Brown, Dorans, favor. Re-Meet President Harden.
Next, we have 0113X-2023, to accept the capital improvements program 2023-2028 as described herein as the primary guide for future capital improvements budgets ordinances, and to declare an emergency. The capital improvement program is the city's five-year roadmap to guide our investments in physical infrastructure. It includes the remaining priorities from the last several voted bond packages. For the last two months, Columbus City Council has been analyzing the administration proposal and hearing more feedback from our residents. This capital improvement program details $5 billion worth of infrastructure improvements and developments here in the city of Columbus over the next five years. That is over $1 billion more than the last capital improvement program. As Columbus continues to grow, the need for high-quality physical infrastructure in our city becomes greater, and the city is prepared to meet that need. I have moved to amend as submitted by the clerk. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Brown, Dorans, favor. Re-Meet President Harden.
Amended. Finally, I move for adoption. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Brown, Dorans, favor. Re-Meet President Harden.
Adopt it. Next, we have ordinance 1711-2023 to adopt a capital improvement budget for the 12 months ending December 31, 2023, or until such a time as a new capital improvement budget is adopted, establishing a project budget for capital improvements requiring legislative authorization in 2023, to repeal ordinance number 1896-2022 as amended and declare an emergency. This is something we were really excited about here at council. The capital improvement budget is the city's infrastructure funding plan for just this year here in 2023. These are the types of projects we will be seeing in our community very, very soon. Just like with the capital improvement program, the city has incorporated constituent feedback into the capital improvement budget to ensure that this budget can properly address the needs of Columbus community. So let me reiterate, as Columbus continues to grow, the need for high-quality physical infrastructure in our city becomes even greater, and the city is meeting that need. With the funding of parks, of sidewalks, of housing, police and fire substations, streetlights, and so much more, there are several things here that I'm particularly excited about, including nearly $16 million in bikeway projects and more for Vision Zero, our plan to slow down our roadway and make them safer for pedestrians. We also have money for a new library in Marion Franklin on the south side of Columbus, and we're beginning to allocate our $200 million of affordable housing bonds. We also have funding to advance a really important initiative, LinkUS, and our plan to transform Columbus's public transportation system. There is so much good in this capital budget. I just want to thank all those who have worked diligently on this budget, from council staff, certainly. It has been a pleasure to work with Deputy Director Long and Director Owens and the Finance Department and the entire administration. I certainly want to applaud my team, Stanley Gates on the Community Affairs side, Matt Erickson in LRO, for running an amazing process that really heard from residents. And as we said before, we hope that our residents, specifically those who advocated to us, who took us out on the bus rides to show us the infrastructure that was needed, the folks that came to our hearings, the folks that submitted, I hope that they see themselves in this final budget. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues on this budget? All right. Is there anything, Director Long, you'd like to say?
President Harden, President Pro Tem Dorans, and members of council, on behalf of Director Kathy Owens, I'm excited and pleased to present Mayor Ginter's 2023 to 2028 Capital Improvement Program and 2023 Capital Improvement Budget for passage. At just over $1.74 billion, this represents the largest capital budget in city history and is the culmination, as you said, President Harden, of collaborative, community-focused processes that began last fall. This budget and capital improvement program include significant investments in public infrastructure, affordable housing, public safety, recreation, parks, and others. These investments are centered on the mayor's priorities for economic stability, health and well-being, and safe and resilient communities. Again, on behalf of Director Owens, I'd like to thank the mayor for his leadership and vision, President Harden, and all-